Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so just a couple of minutes and we'll get rolling.
Todd, are you currently recording?
Yes.
Thank you.
I actually need to stop this for a moment. Start, hi Erin. I need to start the livestream to Facebook. Let's take a few more moments for this to get going. Okay, we are now running live on Facebook as well. Go back to my screen share, so many buttons. Okay, it is 6:30. My name's Todd Schmidt, I'm Wannakee's Village Administrator. Glad that folks are able to join us for the special meeting of the Village Board, June 25th. Few instructions tonight for the public who are attending, attendees are automatically muted. There's a public hearing, and when the village president opens the hearing, there you can raise your hand to participate and make comments. So there's a little button on your screen if you're participating on the Zoom app. If you're participating by phone, there's also a raise hand function by pressing star nine. So as people raise their hands, I'll be able to see those hands raised in the order that they were raised. And then I can control bringing people in to speak and ask their, issue their comments or share stories. In talking with the village president prior to the meeting, he liked to allot each speaker up to five minutes. I think I'll ask the village clerk Caitlin Steen to watch the time and maybe give a, let you know if there's 30 seconds left. Would that be okay Caitlin?
Yep, that works for me.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing you'll be asked to do before you speak is please state your name and address. So we have that for the record and are familiar with where you're from. For those who might not rather share their comments over this setting publicly, we would invite you to submit comments by email to Caitlin's email at csteen@wannakee.com. So as the discussion goes on tonight, if you're just not comfortable participating verbally, that's fine. We'd love to get your comments one way or another, and you can do that by email. So for the board members, a simple agenda today with one item. So there's not a lot of hoops to jump through for you, but I don't, actually, you're not all automatically muted, you may not be. But do try to stay muted if you're able to until you care to participate. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris to get the meeting started.
Okay, we're gonna call our special board meeting for June 25th to order. Caitlin, roll call please.
Nyla Frye, here. Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Erin Moran?
Here.
Phil Random? Kristin Rungy?
I can confirm that Kristin's here. She's on the road and may not be able to respond at the moment.
Phil Williams. Chris Elner.
Here. Okay. Todd, I don't know what you did, but that was awesome because I couldn't change my screen to look at anything else, which is great now that I can look again. So when you share, is that pretty much gonna block out what we can look at?
It does, although you can, if we do do a share, you can switch that to not be full screen mode. That way you can see other features on your computer, like the list of attendees or other things.
Got it. All right, perfect. So we have one item on our agenda tonight and
Can I confirm public posting?
Oh, thank you. Caitlin, go ahead.
I can confirm that the agenda for this meeting was posted at all three village postal locations on Wednesday, June 17th, and it was made available online on June 17th as well.
The other thing I can add, Chris, is that we are recording the meeting. It's also running live on Facebook tonight. The recording will remain on Facebook then for people to watch. For you, we will also upload the meeting to our YouTube channel.
Okay, then we have a public comment section for this evening. For anyone who would like to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda, is that correct Caitlin?
You're muted Caitlin.
You're muted Caitlin.
There's no public comment on this agenda, it just goes right to the public hearing.
All right, so I'm trying to look at my, this is the part, I can't get to my agenda right now on the computer because for some reason I'm not able to shrink my screen, so so I apologize for that. So let's move right into our agenda item. Todd, can you read the agenda item for me since I don't have access to it?
Actually Caitlin, I'll call on you, do you have that in front of you?
I have it open right now. Public hearing and discussion on racism, tolerance, and inequality in the Wannakee community.
Okay, so should I introduce this Todd, or do you want to?
No, Chris, go ahead. I do want people to know that also joining us on the call today is Police Chief Adam Kreitzman, he just hit himself. But Adam is our new chief here in town. And then Caitlin Steen, who you saw earlier, is the deputy administrator and village clerk.
Okay, thanks Todd. So as we go through, we're gonna have our public hearing here in a minute. Board members, I think it's important for us to look at this with open minds. I know we're all going to be doing that, and our goal, or my goal with this tonight is for us to get as much input from our community as we possibly can with regards to our working statement that we started, to get feedback from the community on it, and as well as to, if people have some suggestions from, how we can even make it better than what it already is. I think that's important. And then also hear stories as people have them in regards to their beliefs, what they'd like us to know, things that we may be unaware of, or just giving us a different perspective on race in our communities and how we can be better as a community. So that's the important thing of what we're trying to accomplish tonight. I don't think we're gonna make any decisions obviously tonight, but get to get as much information from our fellow citizens as we can, and then look to make a decisions, make some potential decisions at our next meeting based on the information we've received tonight. I don't think we should take information lightly and make quick decisions tonight. So I think we should take and gather that and then have more discussion into the future. I don't even think it'll be at our next meeting, that would be complete. As far as when people
Chris, real quick, I do want to let you know Phil's having some troubles logging in, I'm helping in the background, should have him up here pretty soon, okay?
Okay, as Todd mentioned, we're gonna have five minutes per person, they can put their hand up, and Todd will bring them in to the meeting. I would ask that people be kind to one another. Everybody has the right to give their opinion tonight. I don't want to see anybody attacking anyone else, whether it be a board member or directed at a board member and/or directed at any other citizen as we go through this tonight. I think that's what we're trying to do, is come together and learn from one another. And attacking or making statements that are derogatory to any person fall right within what we're trying to accomplish tonight is not have those situations happen. So with that, if anybody does decide to do that, Todd would be cutting you off short of your five minutes. And if he's late to the game, I will make sure that I stated as well. So it looks like Phil is joining us, perfect. Welcome Phil. So Todd, let's have our public comments and get started with that.
Okay, very good. People can go ahead and raise their hands as they see fit. There is one already raised, and as those hands go up, that's when I'll bring, I'll see the order, I'll be able to bring people in. So first, I'm gonna bring in Emily Windowski. And she should be able to unmute and talk now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I occasionally have issues. So I'm actually gonna kick off on accessibility and ADA stuff. So I wanna start with a story in our nation's capital. A blind woman is standing on an advocacy day in a busy cafeteria. Nobody is available to help her. She simply stands waiting patiently for assistance. There are small signs below hot plates indicating, please ask for assistance if needed. She can't read these signs. There is a presumption of access under the ADA. Oh, I'm sorry, Emily Windowski, 103 West Third Street, my apologies.
Thanks, him.
So there is a presumption of access under the ADA. It's not equal access, it's not independent access, it's just access. If you can get into a place, but you must wait on the convenience of staff, you are being accommodated. You might feel terrible and subhuman and demeaned to be forced to ask for these accommodations, but this is how the ADA works. Unfortunately, the need for accommodation doesn't just end with somebody offering to escort a blind woman in her hour of need. Sometimes our built environment plays a huge role in the way physical disabilities are perceived and access the world and businesses. Someone sitting in a wheelchair may have to trouble accessing a table behind stairs and be put farther behind patrons who can access the stairs in a restaurant situation. My point is the presumption of access is both unfair and unequal. In our village, my hair salon is located in the village crossing building. It's a brand new building. And there are some remnants of the cultist lumber, so you might make an argument that the ADA would have been burdensome to the site, but I don't think it would be. If you look at the Madison in Maine, there's a wheelchair entrance for those people who need assistance. So what happens when you would like to access this building and you are not able? Well, first, you have to approach and go up some steps. And if you can't do that, then there's a whole nother procedure. Now, the door to my hair salon is heavy, and not every time can I negotiate it myself. However, the woman who sits at the greeting table is behind a very tall desk. And not every time does she see me and jump up promptly and help me. So then I'm waiting and tapping on the door in what might be perceived as a very rude manner. Now, that's just the front door. Now, on days when it's really hard to navigate, or if I were using a wheelchair, I would have to go into the back door. And those back doors say, don't use this door, go in the front. So that's not welcoming. And then you have to call with the cellphone or otherwise signal staff because there is no automatic door opener. It's not friendly, it's not equal, and certainly I think we can do better in future development. I love this salon, so I'm not gonna give up, but every time I go, I remind them of their obligations under the ADA. However, as renters, there's little they can do, and the site was put together in a certain way. Each business in this building has certain features that makes it very difficult to access for people with physical limitations. Now, my experience is as a young person. I know that there are many people who are elderly or even just parents with strollers who might find different accommodations very helpful. Now, we have to, moving forward, consider how these design impacts impact people in our community who might need help. And I'm not blaming anybody for their lack of priority.
30 seconds.
So I would ask you to go beyond simple access, to make priority for equal access for everybody who might have physical challenges. You're on the right path by adopting an ADA transition plan, but I think when it comes to development, you need to consider the impact for people who are physically disabled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Anne. Todd, next.
And Chris, I wanted, before we do, I had prepared, as you had requested, the board statement, the working statement that you put together. Did you want to spend a moment to read through that, if I bring it up on the screen, for those who are watching?
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay, let me do that. There are no hands raised at the moment, so that'll give people some time. Please don't hesitate to raise your hand if you care to offer some comments. And I'm going to share my screen again. There it is, Chris, if you wanted to read through it.
Okay, so the Village of Wannakee Board of Trustees Working Statement Regarding Racist Incidents and Tolerance in Our Community. We believe that our strength as a community is drawn from our steadfast support for one another. We believe that members of our community have a responsibility to know one another and help one another. We believe that diversity makes us a stronger community. We believe that Wannakee should be an inclusive community where individuals of different races, cultures, ethnicity, ethnicities, religions, backgrounds, socioeconomic status, disability and orientations are valued, respected, and supported. We believe that when one member of our community is devalued, we are all devalued. We recognize that words have power, can cause real and tangible harm to individuals, and tear at the fabric of our community. Because we hold these dear, we condemn in the strongest terms possible any word, deed, or action that seeks to marginalize, degrade, or harm others based on their race, culture, ethnicity, religion, background, socioeconomic status, disability, and orientations.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Chris. And for those who maybe came on a little bit late, trustee Kristin Rungy is participating. She, you can't see her, she's participating by phone tonight. So I just want to let you know that she is with us here. All right, thanks Anne. We do have another hand up. Let me move off, okay. All right, I'm gonna be bringing in Melissa. Melissa, if you can state your name and address.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, Melissa Elmannuar. 208 Fairbrook Drive, Wannakee.
Welcome Melissa, you, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of requests of the village in terms of, I think that the working statement is a good start, but I would request that the village take a proactive stance and develop several things for a long-term plan. So the first thing I would ask is that the village establish an equity task force. And as part of the equity task force, I would expect a a plan to be developed, a two to four year plan, and how the village is going to be addressing inequity issues. The plan should be detailed and funded, and it should include how to address things such as job, income, policing, health and wellbeing inequities. I also ask that the village board consider reserving a seat on the board that would be specifically for a person of color, whether that be black, indigenous, or other person of color. Another thing that I would ask is that the village address and conduct a study on what could be done in terms of better access to credit, such as stipends, loans, and other types of wealth inequities that could be helped. The village could help address the racial wealth gap. And I just want to point out that a study came out last week stating that of the 50 states, Wisconsin was number 50 of all 50 states in terms of the wealth gap between white and black Americans. Those are the comments I would, I'm done with my commenting then.
I should add, Chris, that this isn't, this is listed as a hearing and as discussion for the village board. So I think it'd be appropriate, if any board members have questions for those who present. I know we already had Anne speak, but maybe, Chris, you might want to offer the opportunity for board members to ask questions of any of the presenters prior to moving on to the next.
Okay, so you would recommend then for each person that we have, the board members, address them now. Generally during our public hearings, we listen to everybody and then go, but I'm okay with it if
How did we list this on the agenda? I think it was just a single item.
It is just public hearing and discussion.
So this is, it's collectively listed, partly intended so that the board could directly interact with somebody who is asking a question or sharing some issues. So if it's, I guess that's your call, but it is possible for you to consider doing that.
Okay, so let's do that then. Melissa, you have Melissa with the ability to talk right now, is that correct?
Yep.
We can bring Anne back if people have questions for her. I'll just start then and go around and see if board members have questions for Melissa. Erin, I'll start with you, any questions for Melissa?
No question. Thank you for your comment.
Phil Williams?
No questions. I would like to see that survey and learn more about the authorship of it.
Melissa, I think you have my email. Please forward that to me and I'll share with the board.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Gary Hertzberg?
No thanks, Melissa, none at this time.
Nyla Frye?
I don't have questions at this time. Thank you, Melissa.
Does Kristin have the ability to respond right now Todd?
I do.
Perfect.
Yeah, and no questions, but just a comment, consistent with what Melissa said, that one of the the reasons the economists I work with tell me that we have this gap in equity or in wealth is due to homeownership and historical redlining practices and through to this day differences in access to credit, particularly mortgages. So there's some interesting literature behind that. I think some of the things, I hope some of the things we're doing with housing will be able to address that in part, but certainly this is gonna be a big task that we as a society have to undertake.
Okay, thanks Kristin. I guess my only question, Melissa, and thank you for sharing coming on here and doing this. I know this isn't easy for some people, and I'm not stating that it wasn't for you, but thank you for coming on. The comment that you asked about reserving a board seat, can you elaborate on that? What are you looking for with that? And maybe you could give me just a little more background or information on what your thoughts are on that.
And so the idea in terms of having a seat reserved for someone that is a person of color is really to have the representation and the input to the board by that person of color. Right now, the board doesn't have that type of representation, and so I feel like there's a real voice missing.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I can offer one piece of information for Melissa on that. The composition of the board, the decision-making, the seven votes, that's established by state statutes. But what I have seen some communities do, and certainly we can talk about it with the village board here, is reserve advisory positions, people who would attend meetings on a regular basis, share and offer opinions on issues that come before the board, but wouldn't have a vote because state statute would prohibit it. I've seen that done for, I've seen youth positions, like position reserved for someone from high school to come to all board meetings to give that perspective. So I see perhaps potential for that as a fit based on what you're sort of requesting.
I think that sounds like a great idea, Todd.
Hey, thank you. Todd, any other questions for you, for Melissa? Are you, are you coming, Stan?
No, no.
Okay, perfect. And maybe we could bring Anne back in, if anybody has, I want to give the board members a chance to ask her, can we do that?
Yep, I'll do that. Okay, Anne's back in.
Okay, Nyla, any questions for Anne?
No questions for Anne, thank you.
Phil Williams?
I have no questions, just a statement. I agree with her that we should do everything we can to make these accessible. My people from the senior center, while not handicapped, our steps get a little shorter and our ability to negotiate ramps, open and close doors gets worse and worse with age. And so yes, I'm very empathetic to what she's talking about there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Phil. Gary Hertzberg?
Maybe just to take on with Phil a little bit, I mean, that to me needs to be at the planning commission level and with our consultants to make sure that we're doing everything we can. You know, not just to meet the ADA, but maybe we need to take it a step further to make sure that, and Anne's comments were, you know, good ones, that, you know, maybe she could help us understand the issues, you know, that people face, because you can always meet the minimums, because that's what a developer wants to do, but maybe we need to go a little further.
Thanks Gary. Erin Moran?
No questions, but I'll just agree. Well, thank you Anne for your comments. And I completely agree, something personal to me and very close to my heart. So I hope we can continue to do what we can to make sure that everyone is welcome and accessible.
Kristin Rungy?
Thanks Anne for the comments, and I agree with everyone that this is something that we need to probably be aggressive about and look into.
Okay, my comments are more, as you were talking about it Anne, right now at Village Hall, I don't really generally have any problems navigating any doorways or any walkways or anything like that. But at Village Hall right now, one of our doors is really difficult to open. It's a heavy door that, I don't know if the hydraulics are screwed up or whatever, but just to get through the door is very difficult. And as a person that doesn't have a challenge usually, it kind of made me think right now as you're bringing that up. All right, I have a hard time getting through that door, and your scenario is basically saying, yeah, we need to fix that. Just like we can fix that door to make it so it's easier for me to get through, we need to make sure we have all those points in our community as we're doing our planning available to all. So thank you for those comments.
Chris, that's because the door's locked.
It's just the one door Todd, actually, but and I put my card up to it and it still does that to me, but regardless, it's all good. So thank you Anne. I didn't miss anyone, did I? Now I gave you your opportunity, right? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thanks Anne.
Next, next.
Yep, I have Robert McPherson, I'll bring Robert in. There you go, Robert, you can unmute and your name and address.
Hey, Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. By the way, please tell me if you can't hear me, I'm working with my laptop here, I normally have a headset, so I'm probably
You're perfect, thank you.
So I want to start with, you know, hopefully there's going to be quite a few more people talking after me that are people of color that have had more experience in this than I have. As some of you on this, on the board know, and you know, I hope this doesn't lead to me getting cut off here and perceived as a personal attack, because this is, you know, these are the facts of what happened. There was an incident back in April where myself and another member of the community were targeted in a letter with anti-Semitic tropes inside of it. It also had some racist tropes towards another candidate that was running in the April election. When I approached the village board about it, you know, I asked, what are you going to do to make families like mine, you know, Jewish families, safe in the village? The answer that I received back was, it was to make more friends for one person. The answer that I received back was, it was to make more friends for one, one person. And, you know, it was kind of brushed off. My disappointment from that was echoed in the letter to the editor that I placed in the paper, and it did start a little bit of a discussion. My disappointment was further deepened that the village didn't actually decide to take, you know, that, that kind of canary in the coal mine that there were some issues here with bigotry until there's a video of some, well, I'd say more young adults than kids leaning out of a car window yelling racial epithets of the worst kind, which no one should ever condone, and we don't condone. We've seen a lot of turmoil in the United States lately, over the past few years and very recently with the killing of George Floyd. I'm disappointed that I haven't seen the village boards, you know, say, say his name and condoning the violence against people of color in the community. And, you know, while it is a start to have the working, working talking points, however you want to phrase it, I would point out that a lot of municipalities around us have issued resolutions that they voted for in the past. A lot of municipalities around us already have, and of similar size to us, I'm not talking Madison, already have working groups at the, you know, municipal level for addressing issues of discriminatory behavior in the community. The village has attempted to take steps in the past. I strongly believe, and I very publicly have spoken about this repeatedly, that generational wealth through homeownership is one of the keys towards reaching equality and equity between, you know, all members of the community, no matter what their race, ethnicity, religion. And we attempted to address, address that in the Housing Task Force, and it was, it was largely pushed aside. I'll be honest, there was only two of us that were really championing that issue. But there are people that are on the village board that were aware that these discussions were happening. You know, fast forward to now, we're having this meeting. I'm not, I'm not happy to be here. I don't want to talk tonight. I don't, I, I, this is, this is embarrassing. I have to come on here and, and talk to a group of people that at this point, I don't feel really have my interest or any minority's interest in this village unless you're white and Christian, you know, they don't, you guys don't really seem to care about us. And it's really created the situation where, you know, we hear a lot of talk, there's no action. The, the Housing Task Force gave recommendations that would have helped to achieve parity, and it, it got pushed out. And then we have the CDA now, and even some of the things that we talked, the Housing Task Force not approached at the CDA level. We've, you know, the Ad Hoc Committee on Inclusion that the school board was putting out, the village didn't seem to be interested in it until the incident occurred with the kids yelling outside of the truck. And it's really disappointing to see, to see, you know, that the village feels that now's the time to engage in that because, well, now it's a problem because, well, we don't like it when we have negative press, and that's what happened. You know, when this all occurred, going back to my incident with the antisemitism, there was a demand to see the letter. Hopefully tonight, the, the recipient of that letter will read that letter too, and you can finally know that it does exist.
30 seconds.
But what I really want to put, put across to you is that you should always be fighting this. You should always be fighting against bigotry. You should always be looking for equity. It's your job. You're supposed to be looking out for the health and welfare of the people that live in the village. That's what we elect you to do. And don't only take action just because you got in the news and you don't like the fact that the village is now being painted in the negative light. I know these things are tough to hear. I know we think that everything here is great, but it's not. A lot of us are suffering through this. A lot of us have kids suffer through this, and it's time to change.
Okay, thank you, Robert, for your comments. Gary Hertzberg, I'm going to go to you and see if you have any questions or comments to Robert.
No, none at this time. I don't know if, you know, I've heard about this letter, and I don't know if Adam has, you know, been aware of it, and if anything has been followed up on that, but, you know, whatever happened to Robert, I mean, it's just wrong. You know, it's not acceptable. You know, none of us would accept that. So, you know, and again, all we can do is go back to, you know, law enforcement and the police to see if there's anything we can do about that.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Nyla Frye?
Okay, Robert, I hear what you're saying, and along with you, I worked on the Housing Task Force to get accomplished what we could. I'm not going to quit working on housing for all in Wannakee. I'm not going to turn my back on everyone being safe and feeling that they're included in the community. And I guess that's, you know, where I am with this. I don't think anybody that I know of, other than the letter that you received, has, is out there to intentionally do negative things. I, even myself, I know that because of, I'm white, I don't understand all of the issues with everything that's going on. And I think through education, working together, talking, we can work together. And I, I'm just sad that, I, I think it's an issue that has, has kind of festered for years. And I'm not just, I'm not talking specifically and just about Wannakee. I'm talking about our environment over many, many years in this country. And so I'm hoping that the conversation has opened. I'm hoping that we can all work together, become more educated, and really work on this issue. Thank you.
Kristin Rongi? Kristin Rongi? Todd is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Robert, I commend you for, for speaking out and, and bringing this issue to the village board, not once, but twice. I am so sorry for what has happened to you that was wrong. And going forward, I think we do need to be better and, and quicker in how we address this. So I think that's what we're, we're attempting to do now. And if we're playing catch-up, I think it's an honest and heartfelt attempt to fix what maybe hasn't gone well in the past. As far as inclusion versus exclusion, I agree with you. I think that genuine efforts to include folks that are representative of populations who have been excluded from social clubs, from formal organizations and whatnot is, is one of the things that we all as community members can be very aware of. As far as the Housing Task Force is concerned, I agree that, that it can be difficult to, to slowly watch things progress slowly. But having a lot of experience in facilitating these changes across different government units in the state, things take time. There's a lot of structures to work for it. It can be frustrating at times, but, but I hope that we're living up to what that task force is aligning for us. So again, thank you for bringing this up, and I commend the bravery it takes to, to come forward when things happen.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Phil Williams?
If anyone, not, not even just Wannakee, anyone wrote a letter of that type, shame on them. In my defense, when this issue came up on the listening session, I had no knowledge of a letter. I didn't even know that the letter existed. I answered, and the only way I've ever attacked these things is I try to open up dialogue one-on-one and let my personal record and my friendship with other people stand in how I conduct myself. Sometimes I do the wrong thing, but it's not intentional. It's just because I maybe go about it a little blustery in a way. But if this letter exists, if somebody from Wannakee exists, send it even worse. But, you know, we shouldn't send letters of a bad nature. I'd love to address the person who wrote it, but I can't. And that's enough of that. I'm sorry.
Erin Moran?
No questions. Just reiterate what the rest of the board has said. And I think my intent with the working statement and calling it that was, like my opinion, our commitment to work on these things and recognize that, you know, we need to pause and learn and do what we can to educate ourselves and move forward with the community so we can help present everyone what their input and not, that's what we knew at the time.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Robert, I'll say, from my perspective right now, that was a terrible situation that happened to you. Any bigotry, racism, we've, we've put together a start for a statement with us. You're asking for, for more action from us and stating that we're only talk and we haven't done anything about it. And to a certain degree, I agree with you. On the flip side of that, I think we are taking the steps right now, and we're being very careful to make sure we do it right. To come out with statements condemning it, yes, we absolutely have come out with our statement condemning what's, what's happened in our society, and it is wrong. But to open and say that the board doesn't care is, I can't accept that, that you, that statement. You made it, and, and I'm sorry that you feel that way. We have to do better to make sure that you feel that we, we do care, is what it comes down to. As far as the, you brought up the housing study, the Housing Task Force. The Housing Task Force did great work. The people on that put their time, their efforts in, and yes, it is at the CDA level right now, and we're moving towards that. Nobody, in my opinion, has made great strides with regards to this issue in Dane County. We're, we're going to do the very best that we can and we're capable of, and we have outstanding people looking at this and trying to make the best decisions possible, and we want to be leaders in this situation, bottom line. I was fortunate to attend the Veridian groundbreaking this morning, and Chris from Veridian indicated that we had undoubtedly the best Housing Task Force report that he'd ever seen in his years of doing development. And was very impressed by what we did. So I'll point out to you that, that work was very valuable, not only to what we're, what we're going into and what we're going to be undertaking, but it's also valuable to the developer to help them in understanding what our needs are for our citizens. And the goal with that Housing Task Force was to have a great representative of our community, the best that we could. And I'll just refer back to Melissa's comment about having it. We need to have as much participation as we can amongst all of our committees in the village. Okay, the village board gets a lot of our recommendations from those committees and the good people in our community that are giving those recommendations and doing the work behind the scenes. We need to make sure that everybody's included with that. But people need to also take that step forward and attend those committee meetings and get their inputs to those committees. Those agendas are all posted, just like our agendas are posted. All right, we, we have opportunities. All of our emails are on our village website. Please send us emails if there's situations. The situation that you undertook, Robert, was wrong. I didn't know anything about it until after the election had already been settled. I would recommend, not just for you, but for anybody who runs for office, if something like this happens, please take that to our police chief, Adam Kreizman. Please take it to Todd Schmidt. Please take it to Caitlin Steen. Make sure they're aware of it, because there's no way that we can address it or even know to address it until after the fact. And after the fact isn't going to be good enough. That's the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned. It shouldn't have happened. It should never happen. It did happen. And we need to move forward with it. Okay. Any other, hand, next hand, Todd?
Nyla, Nyla had her hand up. Did she have a follow?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment. Chris said that if anybody who's running for office receives any communication such as that letter, they should turn it over to the authorities or let people know about it. I would go a step further and say that if anybody receives anything like that, they should take it to the police chief and have it taken care of, because there may not be a lot that they can do pertaining to a letter like that at that time, but you never know what could happen down the line, and that would be documentation of a situation. And I just wanted to make that point.
Thanks, Nyla.
And this is Kristin. Can I chime in too? And add something along with that, you know, we know that there has been some leafleting and some plier-ing from some neo-Nazi far-right groups in different parts of the state and some in the larger Madison region. So when these issues do happen, yeah, getting it to Adam Kreizman and to the Anti-Defamation League and to the Dane County Sheriff are really important steps in helping us understand the scope of the problem and, and allowing us to proactively protect community members. So again, so sorry that you had to go through that. We will be there in whatever way we can.
Okay, thanks, Kristin. Okay, Todd, next hand, please.
Joel Lewis. I'll bring Joel in here.
Welcome, Joel.
Joel, you're in.
Could you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Welcome, Joel.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Joel Lewis. I live at 5299 Easy Street. I just want to piggyback with what Robert said, plus other things that came up. I ran for school board. I was the black guy who ran for school board. And the reason why I say that is because I realized that I like Wannakee. I, I considered this my community. I have four kids in the school district, and there's just a lot of stuff that has been going on lately that has just gotten me concerned. So the thing is, is that, you know, I see a lot of symbolism. Now, this is what I'm talking about, like, so what Robert said in terms of he got the letter. My thing is, is that because of what went on, it triggered me as well in terms of beefing up security at my own house because I'm just waiting for something to happen. And I don't know when that will happen. And I, and I don't want people to think that those things don't happen. We do have people in this community who do not want to be inclusive, who are bigoted, racist, however you want to phrase it. I'm not saying that's everybody. But the thing is, is that when I see, especially in the school system, you know, kids wearing, you know, a Confederate flag or the N-word is being used, I have a problem with that. It can't just be they shouldn't say that, but I feel like we have to set a standard. It, it's just hate. That's what that is. We could talk about freedom of speech, but again, when we're talking about things like that that cause anxiety in kids, they cause kids other mixed emotions, which also triggered emotions in me as I was when I was younger. The other thing I think about is how do we show inclusivity? Do we celebrate other cultures? How do we do that? Right? Why can't we do that? And then when I, when we're talking about this working document, how long is that? Is that something? Now, I think I heard in the last meeting that this is something that's going to be ongoing, because this should be something what the village just does, not something that there's like a deadline. But the other thing is, is how do you hold yourselves accountable to enforcing those things? So the representation is really important. I also personally know people of color who lived in this village in Wannakee and well-known, but they left because of so many incidences that were happening that were, I don't want to say under the radar, but wasn't out there in the public's eye. So I guess for me, what I'm saying is, is that I want to offer myself as a way, use me, to help better Wannakee and the other surrounding areas. I just feel like we need to put a stand down. We need to, there needs to be a stand where you're saying that this is what we're behind, this is what we're going to do, we're going to put resources behind it. If something happens, we're going to make it an issue. We're not just going to brush it off. Because actually, when I was campaigning, one of the things I actually said was, you know, if we don't change what we do, we're going to be another Baraboo, referring to those kids, what they did, and look what happened. You know, now we have media, and now we, we have this heat coming down on Wannakee. But the thing is, is that I feel like we can turn, turn the channel. I think we can move forward. I think this is really a great step. But my thing is, is that there's probably a lot of people who are going to hold. But my thing is, is that there's probably a lot of people who are going to hold the board accountable to make sure they follow through and that this is just not, okay, when this incident blows over, we're going back to normal. Thank you.
Joel, thanks. I'll start this time with Kristen, rung it.
Thanks, Joel, for sharing that and for your, you know, for sharing that. I think we need to be in this for the long haul. This is something that, that if we cannot support our community members and be a community where everyone is included and everyone is lifted up and everyone has opportunity, then I don't know what we, you know, what we're doing. That is one of the basic things that we need to do. So thank you again.
Erin Moran.
No comment. Thank you for your comments. But I, and I completely agree that we are, should be, should be in this for the long haul. And I hope that we can hold ourselves accountable and of course that the citizens of Wannakee can hold us accountable. But in the same time that we can have action steps that we, you know, push for and, you know, sooner than later. And it's not a, not a someday thing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Gary Hitzberg.
Yeah, Joel, I like your interview in the paper for the school board. Like to support you there and I'll give you a shout out in the next week because I'd like to meet you.
Sounds good.
Nyla Frey.
Thank you, Joel, for the information that you gave us. And I agree with what Kristen and Erin has said. And I guess I'd like to add to it that every citizen in this community needs to feel safe. They need to feel welcome. And I think we can get there. It's going to take some education, some work. And I've been working on myself and what I find is, is the more I read and the more I think I'm learning, then I turn around and I find out I even need to learn more. And I think that is what we, it's how we will get through this is by opening ourselves up and realizing that probably all of us have a lot to learn.
Thanks, Nyla. Phil Williams.
Oops.
You're on, Phil.
I know, I'm trying to do something here. I must have lost something. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Joel, we've met a few times. I really enjoy meeting you and talking to you. I look forward to sometime in the future when we can go beyond that, have you and your wife and the kids even come over and sit on the deck and chat. I'll introduce you to a wide variety of kids in the neighborhood that call me Grandpa Phil. You're a guy I enjoy talking to. You have a ready smile and I think you're a very genuine man. And I think that sitting and talking and opening dialogue and being friendly with each other can go a long way towards making Wannakee a better place for both of us to live together here. Thank you.
No, Phil, you're so old, I call you Grandpa Phil.
Thank you very much.
I think that might have qualified for, you should have cut him off, Todd, for calling. But Joel, thanks first for sharing what you shared here tonight with us. And thank you for running for our school board. As you know, the schools in Wannakee are one of our, I'll just call it, one of our greatest assets. And they have been, in the 50 years that I've been in the village, always been supported. And every day, I'm being enlightened right now with how I can be a better person to all people. And there's times where, you know, I grew up in Wannakee. And the only minority in Wannakee was our candy factory, was the only place that I saw any minorities. And those were minorities that were bussed in to work in the factory. And they were bussed out at the end of the day. That was the only minorities I knew. And I didn't have a lot of exposure. So my perspectives, and in going to college, it was not really any different in the college I attended. So I guess what I'm saying to you is you can provide a great perspective, as can all of our minorities. And I think that's, that's a point that I think that Melissa, I'll go back and that's why I asked her the question about, you know, her comment about having, reserving a board seat. I think it's important that we have a diversity across all of our committees. And of course, I encourage all people to run for elected offices. It's a great opportunity. It's a great thing to be part of. But it's not for everybody, but it also can be one of the most enlightening and grateful things that you can do for any community. So I encourage you to meet with all of us, just like I encourage any of our citizens. Reach out via email, phone. And unfortunately with the COVID, it's hard to meet, but I just found that meeting with Nyla, we can actually have a nice conversation with our masks on and sit six feet apart and have a great discussion. So I'm happy always to do that with anyone and I'd love and encourage us to do that as well. And the fact that my wife is a school teacher at Prairie Elementary, that we'd have more that we could talk about, I'm sure. So I look forward to meeting you at some point here and please do reach out to me. Okay?
Good.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, Todd, next.
Yep. Cassandra, I'm going to bring in Cassandra. Here you go, you can unmute and then name and address, please.
Welcome, Cassandra.
Hi, Cass. Cass is here.
Okay, Cass.
I am Cassandra Punzel and I'm actually at 5568 Shannon Way. Thank you for listening to me. I'm also, if any of you happen to see the whole thing that came about with Channel 3000, that whole little interview that was done right here on my front porch. But where I'm hoping to have a lot of conversations in general, I'm hoping other people are going to have those conversations as well. As far as examples and things that have gone on, I'm originally from Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, which is very similar to Wannakee. And when we looked at moving here, when we did it in 2008, it was primarily for the schools, outstanding schools, because of my background and what I did. I worked in housing for both Dane County and the city. I was very familiar with all the different school districts and everything else. And everything I knew, I like, our, our future children, our children, need to grow up in Wannakee, go to these schools. I never, and because it seemed diversity-wise and everything else seemed very much like Lake Geneva. And I have great memories growing up there and we're still very tight-knit, even though everybody is all spread out all over the country. I also, not just Lake Geneva, but right by Lake Geneva, that's also where I grew up, which is Lake Ivanhoe, happens to be Wisconsin's oldest black community, which nobody's ever heard of. So I had a lot of, I had a lot of exposure to things, my own culture and everything else. In any event, I never felt, growing up in Lake Geneva, I never felt like there were racist incidents that happened, but they were very blatant types of things. I mean, there was KKK, cross burnings, that kind of thing, but usually more by Janesville. But it was more blatant. And I always personally grew up, I happen to be half Hispanic and half black. I always personally grew up that I could do and achieve anything. And I believed that and I felt very supported by my community growing up. And so that's what I expected when I got to Wannakee with my family. And there is so much to love about Wannakee. There is a great community. I do love living here for a lot of reasons. I was blown away, however, by the level of, yeah, the level of, I'll say socially acceptable racism that goes on here. I'd never, I just had never experienced it, nor did I ever expect it. And you don't have to look very far or dig very deep to see it. I, yeah, you can, the whole Robert letter, which I, I'm sorry I joined the call, unfortunately a little late, so I didn't get to get all the details on Robert's letter. I am familiar with it, but the whole idea, if you don't like it, here, move. I innocently, the other day, like two days ago, posted just a random question because I started this whole Want to Talk Diversity Group for locally to work on diverse issues and things like that with different community members. Anybody who's wanting to listen is very much nonpartisan, but the idea is for people to learn. And I've been doing these Zooms and, and I'm not the only one, you know, Joel Lewis and some other people. We've all been reaching out to the community and offering up the ability to talk with us and everything else. In any event, in that diverse group, that Facebook group that was started, the idea about changing the warrior name came up. I knew nothing about the warrior name at the high school, you know. I knew nothing about that history. I innocently and as innocuously as possible tried to just ask, what do people know? Or do people think the school board, for example, should change the warrior name for their, for our mascot? In less than an hour, there was over 300 comments. And there were several comments that were disparaging of me. There were several comments that told me, and I was not even providing an opinion either way. I didn't have an opinion either way. There were several comments, and again, I screenshotted all of these things because they were fantastic examples of microaggression and aggression, aggression, but told more, in more than one comment, that I should move. And that all I do is cause trouble. And anybody who actually knows me and has actually taken the time to either, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did you need me to?
Yes, you can finish your last statement there. Go ahead.
Anyway, I, the point being that you don't have to dig deep and far to find what is now coming tremendously to the surface. And that there needs to be action around it. There needs to be accountability. And please, I love that you guys are reading and getting consultants, whatever you're doing, but please reach out to those of us in the community, the people that live in this community. We want to help.
Okay, thank you, Cass. I guess I'll start with this one, since I have, I'm trying to move it around so everybody goes first, just so everybody has noticed that. Thank you for sharing and what you're doing in the community already and making awareness, putting more awareness out there. Couple of things that you brought up. So Robert's letter, I don't know what was in Robert's letter. After I found out about it, I did request that I could see it so I would know what it even entailed. And I never was given a copy or really even told what it was. So it's very hard to address something that you don't really know what it was, other than it obviously was something bad. So that's first and foremost. As far as you say that to reach out to you, please reach out to us. We most, I can't say this to Gary, because Gary, you might be retired, but I don't want to say that. Those of us that have jobs during the day, as well as our village government things, we have a lot of different things going on and a lot of different things are pulling our attentions. This is very important and for you to reach out to me would be amazing, so I could, I could reach back out to you. So I would ask that you do that, just like Joel and everybody else that's on here. Please reach out to me. I'll try to get back to you within 24 hours to schedule something with you as far as conversations go. It's important and this isn't the only issue as well. I mean, it's an important issue right now, but any issues that are going on in the community, we want to know about, as do our staff. So we can get them at least working on stuff for us. I've had several people reach out in the last week here, which is great because I've been trying to get people to do that, which I can direct to our staff, as well as our legal team, to look at how can we help that situation. But if we don't know what those situations are, we're not going out trying to find the situations that are out there. Maybe we should be, but it's difficult for us to do that. So thank you for what you're doing and sharing. I'll have to look at what your Channel 3000, as I have not seen that. So I look forward to trying to find that and maybe Todd, if you can find that for me, that would even be better. So I'll say that to Todd. Nyla.
Thank you, Cassandra. I'm, I'm very willing to meet with any resident of Wannakee, Westport, Vienna, anybody who wants to talk to me. That's one of the things I ran on, is that I'd be accessible and that I'll listen. And pretty much that's how I live my life. I enjoy talking to people. I probably talk too much, but I am working on my listening skills. So please give me a call. I hope Joel, I hope Robert, and Anne, I know, any of you can call me. I'll set up a time when we can meet either on your porch or my porch. And I did see your interview with Jackie and I thought it was a very good interview and a good beginning. So thank you, Cassandra.
Phil Williams.
Yeah, shame on me. I always thought the Wannakee Warrior symbol was honoring the proud warrior heritage of the American Indian warriors, but you know, maybe I'm wrong. I get a kick out of mascots nationwide. My grandson's school's mascot is banana slugs. So, you know, I don't know if the banana slugs are a tongue-in-cheek thing or what, but I'm sorry to say, I never thought that Wannakee's mascot of the Native American warrior was demeaning to American Indians, and I hope it isn't. But I'm sorry, I, this, this is well beyond me. Sorry.
Erin Moran.
No question, but thank you for speaking and starting conversation. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the Channel 3000 thing yet, but I look forward to it.
Kristen.
The email was already sent.
Todd, go ahead, Todd. Hold on one second, Kristen.
Oh, I was just saying that I have sent out the email with the link to Cass's story.
Thank you. Kristen, go ahead.
I had, saw the front porch interview with Cass and I thought that was great. Cass, thank you for hosting the Zooms. I haven't been able to attend all of them, but the ones that I have been in, I've found to be just really productive and a lot of thoughtful, great conversation going on. When, I'll say, I have not spoken up as I know I should about the warrior mascot in part because it is a contentious issue. And until this past year, I had children in school who know me to be something of a, of someone who speaks up. I, you know, I work with a lot of the tribal governments in Wisconsin through my position. And we have a strong heritage in Wisconsin, east of the Mississippi. We are the state with the most sovereign tribal government. So our Native American heritage, it runs strong and deep. We also, all of us by virtue of living in this state, live on land that was ceded by our native, our native nations. So we have benefited economically over the years by the treaties that were, that were negotiated not to the benefit of the Native Americans. And so it's been an issue that I've been strongly aware of for a long time. I would like to see that changed. I would like to see our school board take that issue very seriously. I also recognize it's going to be hugely controversial in the community because not everybody has had the opportunity to understand what that mascot means, how that mascot has been hurtful in the past. And even though we're now the warriors and there isn't on our logos, the image of a Native American, the spear certainly leads back and kind of points in that direction. And the icon that's in the little gem at the high school also kind of indicates that maybe we haven't fully left behind. I recognize that's going to be a really tough conversation for us as a community. And there are probably people listening right now who are deciding that they don't like me for speaking out about it. And I think I'm willing to stand on that and, and, and fight for, for something that we probably need to change. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Cass, I'm just, I'm going to go one more time just because I can. So you mentioned some different things that's underlying within the community. Can you point out some of those things? And you don't, you don't have to give like a specific example necessarily. I don't want anybody's names or anything like that used, but can you give me some examples of what those underlying things are that you're referring to?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by underlying things.
It's under the surface in Wannakee, you said. It's under the surface in Wanakee, you said, that it's kind of, it's not out in front really hard. But I think that's how I interpreted what you said. So maybe I interpreted...
Oh, you mean in a more socially acceptable way?
Yes.
Although there are some very blatant things out there too, don't get me wrong. Just, well, just using this warrior posting as a very good example of what I'm talking about. The veiled things, and it's not the first time that I saw this come up over other issues. But you're trying to change the culture here. You're trying to, you know, if you don't like it, this is the way we've been. Our community has been like this for years and we shouldn't have to change. And I've seen this in another issue, not referring specifically to the warrior thing, but in another issue. We shouldn't have to change everything we're doing just because it's offensive to some minority group, literally. That is what has been said multiple times over other situations. To me even, especially because people know I'm a Christian, so it's okay to say these things to me. Because I should automatically agree with that. And I don't. Because there shouldn't be discrimination against anybody, even if they're not a Christian. So, but underneath that, it's racial. It's, it is racial, unfortunately. Yeah, I mean, I can give you very detailed, specific examples. And I have in some of the Zooms that I've done or some of the porch talks that I've had. But it's there, it's just in a more socially acceptable way. Nobody's running around yelling out the N-word. Well, there is that too. But they're not maybe yet necessarily obviously using those words. They're using more socially acceptable, I guess, terms and behavior and how they're acting and responding to different people. It doesn't matter who it is. It's just, it's happening and other people are either not speaking up, which in effect makes it seem like, seem like they're condoning it. And it does make for a hostile environment for people like me. I have concerns about my own security. It made me nervous to give you my address because there's other people watching this. Particularly, like I said, the post innocently that I posted the other day has over 600 comments on it. And I screenshotted every single one that was vaguely threatening to me on purpose. So that if anything happens to my house, there are, or me, or my child, or anything, we'll have somewhere to start. And I'm not, I'm not somebody who's even an antagonistic type of person at all. And if that's the reception I'm getting over an innocent question, I think that shows you right there, there's a bigger problem. There is a very big problem here that has to be addressed.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing and I look forward to speaking with you. Okay, thanks, Cass.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd, next.
I'll bring in next speaker. And I would say Cass and I have gotten interact online through the social media platforms. And thanks to what I've learned through that group last week, I watched Just Mercy. And this week is going to be 13th. And every time I watch one of those movies, I then jump onto the internet to search more background. And then I'm clicking on links and learning more of the backstory. And as I think one of the other board members said, I'm learning how much I don't know. But that's important. It's important for me to grow. So thank you, Cass, for giving me those suggestions for starting that journey.
Hey Todd, I'd just like to pause for one second here and just comment that, you know, we do have our working statement. And that's one of the things that we're trying to make sure we have a good working statement or good statement for the community. So for those who've already spoken and for those that are out there, absolutely, we want comments about this. But also, if you already spoke, please send us an email. Reach out to us if you feel that there's something that needs to be added to this or anything that could be improved or suggestions for improvement. Okay, go ahead, Todd.
And I'd echo that for those who maybe came on with a call late. You can email csteen@wanakee.com and that email will be delivered to the entire board. So that's csteen, S-T-E-N-E, at wanakee.com. Okay, with that, thanks, Cass.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to bring in Rebecca. Rebecca, okay, you can unmute and share your name and address.
I'm Rebecca Rody and I live at 1605 Shenandoah Drive. I am really glad to hear people speaking up, Cass and Joel and Robert. We moved here last summer, so my perspective is of one who was not from the area. And I didn't know anything about Wanakee. The only reason we wanted to come to Wanakee was because we knew the schools were good. And I think that's kind of how Wanakee is known, which is, you know, definitely justified. When I told some people who were familiar with the area that I was moving to Wanakee, I did get some surprised and doubtful comments. Are you sure you want to move to Wanakee? I'm more of a liberal person. I'm Jewish and I think these people out of concern for me and my family wanted to make sure that I knew what I was getting into if I moved to Wanakee. In terms of things maybe being very conservative, not very open, very white, Christian, conservative. We chose to say, you know what, it's going to be okay. You know, maybe that's just some people's perspective and it's going to be fine. And for the most part, it has been, but I do feel as somebody new to the area, I'd be glad to offer any perspective or I, you know, I want to jump right in and dig right in with you guys on figuring out what to do about these things. Because it did bother me when I hear that somebody at the high school is wearing a Confederate flag hat. And, you know, and that's accepted as fine. And I know that there was the controversy about the warrior mascot, which I didn't know anything about. So I agree, same with me. I don't know what I don't know, and so I'm trying to learn. So I was glad to hear about that. And in some of the comments, somebody was talking about how, oh, we're going to have problems like we had with that Christmas thing a couple of years ago. I don't know anything about that, but it did make me step back and think, oh, maybe I need to be a little bit more careful about who I talk to and what I say about myself. And I don't want to feel like that about where we live. So please count me in for any action, anything that can be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. I'll start with Erin this time. Any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you for speaking to me.
Nyla Fry?
Thank you, Rebecca, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Phil Williams?
Rebecca, great attitude, great way to address the situation. Look forward to working with you.
Kristin Rodney?
Hi, I made it back. Thanks for sharing, Rebecca. I appreciate it. I came in halfway through your comments but heard your offer to help and to share. And thanks for that because that's what's going to make these changes possible, is people willing to share and help us make the changes that are needed.
Kier Hertzberg?
Yeah, Rebecca, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to meeting you. So, thanks for your comments.
And thank you for your comments, Rebecca. I will tell you that several years back, I don't remember exact timeframe, but we had our Wanafest weekend and there's one of our parks that is just kind of an out of the way, almost ditch, that some people set up an indoor, not indoor, but a softball tournament kind of thing for wiffle ball. And they decorated their stadium with the Confederate flags. And we actually had that taken down immediately from when it happened. So obviously, that was an unfortunate situation and, you know, we acted, I think, very quickly and accordingly. As far as the students wearing Confederate flags, what would you suggest that we do as the village board in regards to that? Because right now I'm thinking, I don't really want to move over into what the school board would be doing and what their policies are. What would you recommend that we as the village board would do in regards to something like that?
Oh, I understand and I agree that that is the school board's sort of jurisdiction. But I think in terms of what's acceptable for the village board versus what's acceptable for the school board, if that isn't all in sync and all like making a very firm stance, like Cass said, if it's not immediately come out with, you absolutely, this is not okay. We in Wanakee do not accept that and it's not okay here because it's offensive to some and therefore we don't accept it. So I really appreciate hearing that you took down the flags, the Confederate flags, a few years ago at that park. But I don't, I just think that it needs to be a coordinated community stand without hesitation, as you seem to have been doing so far with the statements and now these meetings. And I really appreciate it. I think that's a great response and I'm ready to keep going with that.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, Rebecca. All right, Todd, next hand, please.
Okay, I have Mike Brand. I'm going to bring you in. Okay, Mike, you can unmute and name an address, please.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Mike Brand. Well, I live in Westport, sorry, not Wanakee. Given that I'm going to read you a piece of mail that I received, I don't really want to leave my address on here. It's available on the school board's website. I'm one of the two Wanakee Middleton Madison reps on the school board here in Wanakee. Just to chime in on one thing that someone just asked about. It's absolutely school district policy, the Confederate flags banned. So that isn't something that should be happening in the future at all. Chris, you're totally right. It's not really the village's thing to deal with, but we are on top of that. Okay? So the first thing I think I would just want to say is I joined the call relatively late because I was asked to participate in it. I want to get out from the get-go. We should also be able to say that Black Lives Matter. I don't know if any of you have said that. I'm hopeful that all of you are able to say it as well. I don't necessarily want to have much of a dialogue on any of this. I think that what most of us here, most of us in the community should be doing is doing a whole lot more listening. That's certainly what I want to do. I'm sure it's what most of you want to do. It's certainly what we want to do at the committee and all those folks that are on it, as well as the village and other municipalities around us too. So beyond that, I don't know what Robert said earlier on this call. I wasn't participating on it or listening at that point. But for, to be clear, the person who received the letter in this case was me. I received and referenced both Mr. Lewis and Robert regarding the spring election. I, up until this point, declined to really talk about it because frankly, I don't believe it's appropriate to give a bigot any more of a platform than they already have. And frankly, given my line of work, I get angry emails often and they're not worth most of our time. I don't really believe that this is worth our time either, but given that there's been some concern about, I guess, the existence of this, I thought it necessary to share it at this point. So the letter is addressed to me, she's in my office. And it did actually get sent to me prior to the election and I really didn't want to make an issue of it, mostly because I wouldn't think it would be fair to other people who are referencing it, who are also up for election at that point. So I'll read you verbatim here. "I'm writing to express my sincere anger at your attempts to make Wanakee look bad and to tell you how much we'll be laughing next year. This community is a Christian village and it will continue to stay that way despite what you and the other Jew who is running for the village must think." Now, this is just an aside here, I'm actually not Jewish and I don't know why this person writing it thought that, but I digress. "Why do you want to start fights everywhere you go? Why do we need more diversity in Wanakee? Why do we need affordable housing so we can have more crime and single moms on welfare? Please, if I wanted that, I could go live with the people that live in Madison or Chicago. You and McPerson and the other guy running and anyone else who wants to change Wanakee are never going to succeed because it doesn't need to change. The good people in this community won't let you. Sure, we can always grow, but there's nothing wrong with Wanakee. I hope your friend Joel knows that you are the reason that slavery even happened in the United States." Look it up. "Your leftist pro-diversity agenda isn't wanted in Wanakee. Why don't you just run for school board in Madison? You sure aren't wanted here." So I will say this, if you tell me to vote for some Jewish banker from the East Coast, I'm not going to. Why should I when I can vote for someone from a nice local family who's been here for generations? Why would I vote for some black guy who isn't from here when I can vote for an address? So there's a letter I received. I think I fall into the category about the least oppressed type of person on the planet. I'm a white, cisgendered, able-bodied male living in Wisconsin. And frankly, I wasn't particularly offended by this letter. I thought it was stupid. I told Robert about it. I told Joel about it. What they decided to say about it from that point up to them. But I wanted to let it be known that that was what was received. I appreciate everyone's interest. I'm glad that this forum is happening. I have nothing else to add to that and I wish you best of luck. I yield my time.
Okay, we want you to yield your, I guess, yield your time to yourself, I guess, is what that would be if you want to come back in, but...
Robert's Rules of Order, so I just...
I got it. So everybody gets five minutes and that's how we're going about it. So let's just go around. Phil, I'm going to start with you on this one. Go ahead.
Whoever wrote that letter, shame on them. That's all I got to say. Shame, shame on them.
Kristin?
Hi, unbelievable, unbelievable. So again, thank you to Robert for bringing this up, for bringing it to our attention. Thank you, Mike, for bringing the letter. I would love to see us try to be able to track this and some of the other mail that might have been received too. A formal tally of what is going on becomes one of the important steps in making sure that these incidents are happening consistently in a systematic way. And individual safety is into question, that we have documentation that we can act. I am so sorry that this happened. I'm just utterly disgusted by it.
Erin Moran?
Yeah, thank you for your comments. No questions, but I agree with everyone. It's heartbreaking and very disappointing that someone feels that way. And it's not appropriate. It's not acceptable. And yeah, I, it's not okay. But thank you for talking.
Nyla Fry?
It makes me very sad that Robert and Joel received, or Mike received a letter pertaining to Mike and Joel. And it also makes me very sad that people in the community feel like this. And it just makes me feel like we have a ways to go. Thanks.
Kier Hertzberg?
You know, I think for all of us, we know what it takes. You kind of put yourself out there to run for one of these committees or run on a village board or the school board. And you kind of put yourself out there and to see something like that, it's just, it's just so wrong. You know, those people, they don't, they don't care about this community. They don't represent this community and it's just, you know, it's a shame, shame on whoever put that out there.
Mike, thanks for sharing the letter. I agree with you. This is something that it should never happen. It was wrong, whoever that did this. I wish this would have been turned over to Adam and Todd before the election, knowing that it was there. So we could have some way to address it. But I'm just seething mad at somebody from my community that they would do this. There's no reason for it and this isn't just a Wanakee problem. This is nationwide problem that we have right now with people with hate for one another. You know, it's interesting, you go back to the 60s and everything was about love and we want to love one another and help one another. Right now, it's very ideological and people have opinions and they don't come off those opinions. We have opportunities, and that's what I look at. This is an opportunity with what's been happening for us to do great things. We can do it as a community and we can hopefully carry it on right up through the state level to the federal level with how we have good people everywhere. Do we have some bad apples? Absolutely. There's bad apples and this one is one of those bad apples that happened and it should never happen. So Mike, I appreciate what you do for the school board. I appreciate what, you know, coming... And it should never happen. So Mike, I appreciate what you do for the school board. I appreciate what, you know, coming on here tonight and talking. And I'll move on as opposed to yielding my time. I have time. Todd, did you have comments? You just popped on there.
Um, I appreciate you reading that, Mike. And I'm, I'm, I'm actually sick to my stomach with the thought that those words are written by one of my neighbors. And if my stomach is sick to it, what is that like for the people to whom that letter is targeted? And I can't, I can't imagine that. You know, for me, the only way to, to, to make my stomach not upside down is by actions beyond our words. And my hope is that, and I'll admit to having not done enough in my role as the village administrator. But my hope is that our work that is started and has a long way to go will result in actions that will make it clear to anyone if a letter like that is ever written again, that this community is opposed to it and behind, and standing behind the people who are targeted 100%. I hope our actions will do justice to that. Anyway, I appreciate you reading it, Mike.
No problem. I, I, I think the only thing I would add is the thought crossed my mind obviously about reporting it or doing anything like that. I, I'm a lawyer. I work in the legal field. I have a partner who does criminal law and we took a look at it. There's nothing illegal in it and the phrase that gets bandied out a lot, and I'll be blunt, is there's no law against being an asshole. And that's, that's, that's what it is. People get to say what they want and position I'm in, people get to say what they want. To me, it was, it was going over a different line and, and talking about Robert and, and I guess less so Joel that had me concerned. So I appreciate you all having this time here and that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Todd, I'm just gonna make one quick comment. Again, thanks, Mike. These things should not happen. And I had a grandfather who this was 100% happening to throughout his life. And he grew up in a time where his name was Adolf. And talk about people being mean, sending letters, doing all the things that you shouldn't be doing. He had that happen to him. Was he a bad person? No, he just happened to have a name of somebody else who was. So not trying to diminish what happened, but this is stuff that we have to make sure, you know, that we speak up as citizens and, and community members when we hear things. You know, that's not right. We gotta make sure we tell people that. So that said, Todd, next, next, I see there's some hands up. So go ahead.
Or I see Rebecca Rody's hand is up. I may have accidentally not put it down. But I wanna make sure we get to people who have not spoken yet. So Rebecca, if you don't intend to speak, lower your hand. Otherwise, you can leave it there and we'll come back to you. But I have, thanks Rebecca. I have Emily. I'll bring in Emily if you could unmute and then your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Rodriguez and I live at 209 Kingston Way. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I felt pretty moved by stuff I was hearing from Joel and Cass and wanted to share an experience that I had here last year. My husband and I and our two kids have lived in Wanake for 11 years now. And last August, we went out to eat at a restaurant here in Wanake. I think it's important to point out that I am white. My husband is Mexican born and then we have our two kids. We went out to eat. My husband and my brother-in-law, who was visiting at the time from Mexico, went to order a beer and a customer told them they don't serve brown people here. My husband got upset. I didn't hear it happen. But he came to the table and was visibly upset and told me what happened and said that, you know, he told the guy it wasn't okay, had some words and that was it. Fast forward, I was very upset about it, but it wasn't until I could see that the customer continued to say things to the bartender. I couldn't hear what he was saying, but I could tell she was getting upset and telling him he had to leave. That I got up and said something, yelled in his face, said it wasn't okay. And at that point, he was told he had to leave. What was most upsetting about it, looking back afterwards, was the fact that there were at least three other people at the bar and nobody said anything. And nothing happened until me, the white person, got visibly upset and went and yelled at the guy. So I've reflected on it a lot and one, I guess, what I just want the village board to see is that we do have, I'm gonna take Cass's term, the socially acceptable racism here. And I think this was one of those incidents that nobody said anything because it was just a joke, you know? You don't need to say anything. But it affected me. It affected my family. It's this one small incident of this so-called joke still causes me great anxiety when I think about it. I haven't been able to go back to that restaurant because of it. And all I'm asking is that for the board to realize that this does happen. I appreciate that you're having this listening session and I just want awareness from you and the community. And the biggest thing that I ask is that we push and motivate people to stand up and speak up when this happens, which I've been hearing many times tonight, but just want to say as somebody who has experienced this, how important it is for other people to stand up because it was so isolating that night that nobody did. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Gary Hertzberg?
Well, it, it upsets, it upsets me more, especially if your kids were there because to try to then explain to your kids why somebody has said it to your husband. It's just not acceptable anywhere. And so, you know, I apologize, but that doesn't mean anything. It just shouldn't happen and, you know, we need to make that change.
Kristin, Rungy?
Thank you for sharing that. I think bystander intervention can be a really powerful tool. I hope we can offer training on it in the future. I think this is, goes right to the heart of, I hear a lot of community members say, know your neighbor, help your neighbor. If somebody's in our community and something is happening, we need to stand up for what is, what is right and protect, protect that person. I'm so sorry that happened to you.
Phil Williams?
It was a stupid, crass thing for a business to do. I hope their shop is empty.
Nyla Frye?
I, I am actually appalled to hear the things that I'm hearing. I mean, I've heard things over the years, but nothing to the extent of the things I'm hearing tonight. And it's becoming more and more apparent that we need to come up with a plan so we can get to know each other better so that we have activities to include each other so we can learn about each other. And we just have a long ways to go.
Erin, Marianne?
Yeah, Emily, thank you for sharing. That's not easy and I appreciate it. A couple to know that it's horrifying and I'm so sorry that happened to you and your family. Especially as Gary said, when your kids are there. That shouldn't happen in our village or anywhere. So thank you and I'm glad we can learn and I hope you can join us to make sure that doesn't happen.
Emily, thanks for sharing your story there and I would tell you that you probably didn't go far enough with, with, with how we handled it. And those situations in our community, you know, Phil, Phil is pretty direct there in saying that he hopes he doesn't have any customers there anymore. I would say that you absolutely have the right to go to any store, restaurant, whatever you want. And, you know, maybe that's one you don't want to, but you know what? You shouldn't have to do that. You should be able to go there and you should be wanting to go there and have a good time. I, as village president, I've been here 50 years, not in this role, but I've been here 50 years and I know most of the businesses and the restaurants that are here. And, you know, this is putting myself out there, but if these situations happen, send an email to me. I'll be happy to go right to that owner with you and say, this isn't right that this has occurred. That, that's one of the, the powers that you have as being on a village trustee or any of the trustees you could go to. I don't wanna speak for them because I'm, I'm the one putting myself out here to do this, but I'm happy to do that for. And, you know, people, people need to know that. It's not acceptable. You know, what, what you described, just like everybody who's described their situation right now, it's not acceptable. But if we don't know about them in our positions, you know, I didn't know this has happened to you, Emily, and I'm, I'm sorry that it happened to you. There's nothing I could do until now. And, and I'm hoping people here that, that they should be reaching out to us.
Right. I, I think it's important to point out, for one thing, you know, I didn't, I myself didn't even know how to react to the situation. But also just in case I need to clarify, it was a customer that made the comment and not an employee. And for a while I was angry that, you know, the bartender didn't kick him out immediately. But at the same time, I empathize with her because if nobody else is saying it's wrong, I don't know that she knew exactly what to do. So I know the business is not at fault, but you, you know, it's just the idea of going back and what if I see that person again, you know, it's, you, you just don't know. But I appreciate the offer to reach out if anything ever happens again. And again, I really appreciate the board coming together tonight to have this listening session. So thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
I wanna thank Emily too. The, I think the one, the thing I take from that is that if that happens once, multiply that by 1,000 and that's the reality of what people of color in our community are, are living with right here in our own businesses. So it's a it's a, it's hard, hard perspective to feel about what, what people are experiencing here. Thanks, Emily. Oh, Nyla?
It brings to mind, we try to teach children what to do when there's bullying at school and how other children can interact with a bully to stop them from bullying another child. And I'm thinking about what Emily just said and she said she didn't really know how to react. I wouldn't know how to react. And I'm wondering if that's something that we need to work on as neighbors, how we, what we do to be neighbors and not only be neighbors, but to also know what to say in a situation like this. I think it's, I've been in some scenarios where you learned how to react and how to respond in a positive, in a more positive way to shut something down like this. And I think that would be something very positive. I'd be interested in attending if, if any such thing occurs in the community that I could be involved in.
So Todd, I, I, I see that we have a couple more people and I, I just, just two, two observations. And one, one of our family names was from Wanake that's been here for a long time was brought up earlier with the letter. And I, I just wanna make sure that we maybe had an individual send a letter to Mike Brandt. And he brought, it referenced the Endress family and I wanna say that the Endress family is a good family. And we don't even know that it was somebody from the Endress family that sent us, but it's one of our families and I didn't want anybody to, to, to take it that somebody's attacking the Enders family either because that's not the intent for what's happened tonight. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear and, and stated. And then Rebecca, I think Rebecca was, was on earlier. She said she came to Wanake because the schools are great. We're in our pandemic right now and I just wanna point out that we have a lot of great things in Wanake for people to do. Go out and see, find our trail systems, get out and see the, the hidden gems that we have out there that our developers, our village board, our citizens have put out in Wanake. Nyla and I were discussing the former stink pond is what it was called. The Rotary has, has taken that pond and turned it into a beautiful location for people to go. They can fish, they can go around, they can see nature. It's, it's a great, and it's right in the middle of our community. Those kinds of things. So get out and do those things and, and meet people. Not to say, you know, the, the comment about you gotta make friends, get out and meet people, introduce yourself to others. That's one way that we can help with this situation. Try to introduce yourself to a couple of people every week. Obviously, we're in the pandemic, so that makes it a little tough. But do that and, and you're gonna see that it's gonna open up a lot of different opportunities, not just for having a friend, but just connecting people. Somebody that might be able to, you know, help you mow your yard, clean the leaves out of your gutter, whatever it might be. Those people are out there and willing to help. So, all right, Todd, go ahead. Next person.
And I, I comment, I got my friend Leonard Allen ripped on me for, for wearing my hat at the meeting. I've got a, I'm eager for my barber, I'm eager for my barber to fit me in. So when he's back up and running, I'm gonna lose the hat nice and quick. All right, I have Stephanie. There's a couple hands up from people who've already spoken, but Stephanie hasn't. So I'll bring Stephanie in. Okay, Stephanie, you can unmute and address and name, please.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Endress, as a matter of fact. I live at 121 Canterbury Court in Wanake. And I retired a couple of years ago and most of my career has been in diversity, training, equal opportunities, civil rights investigations and complaints. So I have a lot of, a lot of decades of experience in this area. And I just wanna bring, you know, none of those stories are surprising to me at all. They're heartbreaking. They're horrible. But I wanna caution the board not to write these off as one incident or one bad apple. Because where you have one, they didn't just grow up like that. They grew up in a family like that. That's how people get that way. So I married into the Endress name. And that feeling of entitlement, not just with Endress as in general, I'm just saying from the original kind of families of Wanake runs deep. And people can be here for 30 years and still be a new outsider. So it's especially difficult for our people of color because they're not traditionally represented in this community and it's horrible. Being a white ally though is tough work and it doesn't just come with one training. It comes with a lot of work and it's not up to our residents of color and their families to be our educators. We have to do our own work. There are a lot of resources out there, but we have to start with our own homework on this issue. The people that came tonight are brave that shared their stories because this is a public meeting and they could receive retaliation for this. They're incredibly vulnerable and we have to protect them. And the best way you can do it is make sure this doesn't drop through the cracks. Like this has to go full bore now and you have to do something. I think, you know, we were talking about is it the village board's job or is it the school board's? Whose job is it? It's all of our jobs. And the more people that combine together to get the word out that this isn't gonna be tolerated in Wanake, the better it is. Because then you're not going, well, that's their job. It's not anybody's job but all of ours, right? So I, I just wanted to say that I'm actually the one that brought up the question of the warrior name on Cass's question website. But she's the one that put it out and she just got blasted. And I actually met Cass yesterday for the first time and I said, I wonder if I had put it out under my name, Stephanie Enders, if I would have gotten as much blowback. We'll never know, you know? But I don't think the vitriol would be the same as it was towards her because she's the one that asked the question. So I'm willing to meet with anybody too and help anybody if, you know, I have a lot of access to resources and, and know a lot of people that do trainings and stuff, but trainings aren't gonna just, you know, a couple of trainings aren't gonna do it. I also realized, you know, that unless you're in the workplace, who gets diversity training unless you're in the workplace? Right? And our older folks, they've never had it. Unless you've been in the workplace, even in the last 20 years, you probably haven't gotten a decent diversity training. So yeah, we have a lot of people here that don't understand what's really going on or how to interact or, or how to be a good ally and. And I, I would love to see that in Wanakee. Thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Nella Fry.
Um, I agree with Stephanie. I think it's going to take a lot of work and it's going to take more than a few training seminars. I don't know what it's going to take, but I think we need to sit down and make a plan and start working on the issues. The sooner the better.
Okay, thank you. Erin, Moran?
Um, no questions, but thank you Stephanie for your comments and ideas and, um, yeah.
Kristen Ruggie?
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, I, I'm hoping we will be able to draw on you and your expertise, um, as we move forward. And I, I agree with you, I agree with Nyla. Um, this is not a one and done or a five and done or a 10 and, and done. This is ongoing, a commitment that, that we as a community need to make, you know, from now until the end of time. This, this needs to be a priority consistently from here on out.
Thanks, Kristen. Gary Hertzberg?
Uh, no comments, but thanks, Stephanie.
Phil Owens?
Uh, yes, thanks Stephanie. I appreciate your comment about the apples. And it's true, what they say, one bad apple can spoil a barrel. We just gotta be better apples. We've got to make sure that we watch and correct those apples so they can't spoil the barrel.
Thanks Phil. And I think that Gary, I got everybody right there. I did raise your hand. I think I got everybody. I just have one question, Stephanie, and that was, you said we have to do something. Can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit and maybe say, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I just, when people say we have to do something, um, what does that mean? And, and what would you like to see done?
Um, well, for instance, what you're doing, you're taking a big step tonight. But when I said that, I meant like it, we can't just have this one meeting. We have to keep taking actions to, to remedy this. I wasn't speaking about anything in particular. I just meant it can't drop through the cracks after this meeting, right? We, we have to actually take some steps, actions after this meeting. If we can, you know, get resources and develop a group in town, um, to be better allies, right? Or diversity trainings, but I, I don't know why. I think some of this stuff should be published and I'm glad it's in a public forum. I'm glad people were brave enough to talk about their stories because I, I know there's a lot of people that think this is just the, the sweetest little community and really just don't know and would be horrified at what we heard tonight, right? But they're not really tapped in, they're busy and stuff like that. I know it's, uh, embarrassing. It's embarrassing to me when I see Wanakee kids on the news or in the newspaper about stuff like this. And I, I want the village board to be at the head of it and say, this is a community of inclusion. We are not tolerating this. We're going to be working with the school board. We're going to be working with, um, our leaders, our people of color, our white allies. We're going to be working on this. Take notice Wanakee. So that, first of all, so that people are aware of the things that are going to be coming up in case they want to join. And for the people who aren't into this at all, um, to kind of put them on notice, like this isn't going to be tolerated. I think we become really afraid as white allies that we're going to do or say the wrong thing, but the only wrong thing we can do is not do anything, right? And there's always a delicate balance, but I want us, I want you guys and us to work together and, um, develop a map, a plan on how we can engage the community in this.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, Todd?
I wanted to ask Chris, there are, um, there's two hands up remaining. Both are people who've spoken, so, if anybody else does want to speak that hasn't yet, um, they're welcome to put their hand up now. Otherwise, Chris, I'd want your permission to allow us people to speak again who already have.
Okay, I'm just giving that time for anybody else who wants to come in.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Okay, so the issue is, is if we open it up to other people, if we open it up to people that have spoken already, um, we had a five minute limit, so I'm trying to stick to that. But, um, if we open this up, if you want to speak again, I want you to put your hand up now. I see that we have two. I'm looking over there too right now, Todd. And if people do want to speak again, we give them one minute. Um, and I know that's not a lot of time, but we'll give them one minute because we had set our rule at five minutes. So, um, some may have earned it early, so I'm giving the benefit of the doubt that they had an extra minute. So, go ahead, Todd.
All right, um, Joel, Joel Lewis, I'm going to bring back in. Here you go, Joel.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make this quick. Um, I just want to thank Mike for, um, being brave to come out. And I also want to thank everybody else who spoke up, uh, because that's really what we need. We need people, uh, allies bringing it to the front. Um, I just want you to understand that, um, and I really didn't need to talk much about it. So the stories you're hearing makes you feel a certain way, but that's my reality and every person of color. Um, I worry about that as a parent, my kids going into the school and seeing racist behaviors and I have no control over that. I feel like it's the responsibility of both the school and the school board and the village, because the school is in the village, to be working together to remedy this. I, Stephanie said it right. Everything she said was on point. Um, but the thing is, is that, um, the reality is, is not just one person. The reason why I say that, I think about I, and as I was running for school board, um, I, I think I did as much as I possibly can. We have more, I was looking at the numbers, um, and I did get a significant amount of support. But I also understand that my reality is I'm in Wanakee. And I am running against, uh, someone who, who, who was born here, who's been raised here, not saying that she's not a good person, but that's my reality. So the thing is, is that I just want people to step up. Um, and I think we need to start holding people accountable, um, as a village and individually. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Todd, next?
Um, thanks, Joel. I'm going to bring in Melissa again. Here you go, Melissa.
Hi, I just wanted to make a few quick comments. Oh, sorry, there's fireworks going off in our neighborhood. I just want to make a few quick comments based on some of the things that had been discussed. Um, one of the things that I just wanted to point out is, Chris, you had said something to the effect of that things are a lot different now. There's so much hate and in the sixties, there was all this love. I just want to point out that's, that may be the perception based on the idea of hippies and whatnot in the sixties, but actually the sixties was full of, there were, sixties were full of racial inequities and rioting and all sorts of things going on. So this is an ongoing problem that the United States as a whole has not addressed appropriately. The other thing I just wanted to say is, I think one of the things that maybe, uh, the board should consider is having the entire board, uh, undergo an implicit bias training. And I wanted to point out that we actually have some implicit bias training experts right here at UW Madison.
Time.
Okay, Melissa, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out and, and I encourage, um, I actually wrote an article for our Horizon magazine. I, I, I'm privileged enough to be able to do that, um, four times a year, I think it is. And, uh, my article is about, um, the sixties. And, oh, I think that had a, a profound effect on, on what we're dealing with today, um, and the events that occurred in the sixties. Um, so I, I completely agree with you. I was trying to make more of a, maybe I didn't do a good job of it. Just the, the overall feel, you know, of, of love and the hippies, yes. Um, and now we have a lot of hate that's going on and it's not directed at any singular group. There's just a lot of hate in general and we, we need to, to get working on that. So, thank you for your comments again, though, and coming in.
And Melissa, every time you just can you speak up, I give you a job to do. Could you send me the news of the trainers that you're familiar with at UW?
Yep, absolutely.
There's all the, there's some other programs in terms of getting to actions that I'm also investigating through the UW. It's a tremendous resource to have right in our backyard. And there is some interest in helping us through some of these very issues together with university programs. So hopefully stay tuned for more information on that.
That sounds great. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
And then I have Rebecca. I'll bring Rebecca back in. There you are.
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate, um, it sounds like everybody is ready to really make an effort to, to see these things through and I really appreciate that. As Mike and Todd both said, though, we are all brought to this moment because as, maybe as people that are not of color, it's becoming more and more apparent that we've been sitting on the sidelines for too long. And whatever we can do to remember, um, that Black Lives Matter is what we need to focus on right now, most specifically. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not going to put any pressure on other board members, but I will state that Black Lives Matter. Okay, uh, and I'll, I'll state it one more time. Black Lives Matter. And I, I hope that people understand what that means and if you don't, um, educate yourself. And don't be naive to it. So, okay, um, Todd, I think that's everybody that had a hand up that I, I see. Board members, I'm, I, I think how I want to close this is just if you have any final thoughts, I'm just going to go through and if you have anything that you'd like to share. Uh, but really, we're not going to, I don't believe we should take any action tonight. I'm hoping that those of you that are in attendance will send us some emails again in reference to our, um, statement that we have put out. If there's anything we need to add that you believe and/or, uh, if there's anything that could be worded differently, better, um, whatever that might be, we'd like to have that input if at all possible. So.
Maybe, Chris, maybe I'd ask that of the board too, as you go around the room. After what you've heard tonight, if you feel there's some aspects of the working statement that we should keep working on and tweaking, um, I'll be taking notes on that feedback.
Okay, Nyla, go ahead.
Um, I would like to, uh, be involved in, uh, training, uh, diversity training if they should occur. I hope they occur. I would like, I have a long ways to go and I realize that. And I think that's, um, part of anything is realizing that you need to grow and, um, keep learning. Um, and I hope that not only us as a board, but the entire community can open themselves up to do what we need to do to be more inclusive and more welcoming to everybody.
Thanks, Nyla. Gary Hertzberg?
It's interesting. I was just following up on Nyla a little bit about diversity training, you know? We have classes at the Village Center for a lot of different things. You know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea if we could get a resource that we knew. Maybe it starts at the village board. I, I've gone through an awful lot of diversity training through my years at AT&amp;T, but, um, I, I think maybe the village board, but, but also the community, because that's where I think we need to expand this. And I, you know, let's think about how we can do that, you know, throughout the village.
Thanks. Thank you, Gary. And to be clear, Gary was not endorsing AT&amp;T in any way and he has retired from the company. Okay. Thank you. Phil Owens?
Thanks for having the session. I look forward to, uh, open dialogue with a lot of the people that were on this. Uh, two, it's too bad I haven't met a lot of them, but, uh, the ones I've met, I think are all positive people.
Erin Moran?
Um, that general thanks to everyone for speaking up or listening. Um, I was really looking forward to this because I, I've been trying to do everything I can to educate myself and get better than the rest of us are. So, um, it's, it's really important to me that we did this and I, um, I'm excited for the ways that our whole community, not just the people tuning in or the seven of us, um, but that we all can work together to make this a priority. And, you know, use what we can as community leaders and, uh, places we have resources, but this stays ongoing.
Thanks, Erin. Kristen Ruggie?
Uh, yeah, I want to thank everyone that, that participated tonight. Um, it's, it, this is a difficult subject. And to have gone through incidents and been subject to this, um, you know, throughout life and share those incidences are, are, I really appreciate the emotional work that that, that takes to do. Um, and, you know, I, you know, I've said it before, this is first steps, um, going forward, whatever we need to do to, to make this community a better place, a more inclusive place, a more supportive place, a safer place, um, based on some of, of what we're hearing. I, I think we're, we're, we're up for it and, and we're going to meet that challenge. And please continue to hold us responsible for that and continue to hold our community responsible for living up to some of the ideals that we think we might, we've, that we're clearly falling short of.
Okay, I'll say thank you to our board members, um, for being here tonight, um, having a special meeting. I think this is an important topic and, I, I can't think of any better way to do this than to include the community. I'm a little disappointed, uh, frankly, in that we have 28 participants total. In our community that is much greater than this. And I know people have busy schedules, but we need to engage, uh, even more than this. There's just not enough that are here. For those that were, thank you. That's what I can say to you is thank you for sharing. Thank you for being brave enough to come out and talk in public. And, um, we have a road ahead of us that this board, and I think previous boards would have as well, um, wants to go down. And we want our community to be the best it very can be. You're not going to find a person, um, on our boards or committees or people in our community that really don't want our community to be a great community. Uh, I think that's something that's been a Wanakee trademark, going right to our schools. Um, they want to have a great, we have a, want to have a great school system. We want to have a great park system. We want to have great people. And that's what this is about. This issue is about people and, and treating each other with respect and dignity. So, um, I hope that people don't think that I'm preaching at them. I'm just stating, um, this is, this is my thoughts. And I, I do have a hat on, so for those who are saying I shouldn't have a hat or Todd has, mine at least doesn't clash. I'm wearing blue with blue. Todd has red with orange. Which isn't a good combination. So, uh, so, sorry to make that comment, Todd, but, and this is not an Irish fan either. This is just a lucky hat, um, that, that I have. So, Kristen, you have your hand up.
I, I was going to say one more thing before we close too. Somebody did, uh, mention earlier George Floyd and I'd like to, um, you mentioned and remember Tony Robinson, far closer to home than George Floyd, um, both one of, in a long string of tragedies. And so, um, for those who have been saying Black Lives Matter, I agree, Black Lives Matter, and it's an urgent issue right now. I just wanted to get that in before we ended, Chris.
Phil?
Yeah, as we go forward and as we get, uh, rid of this COVID-19 thing, we're going to have some, uh, activities in our parks. We're going to have Big Rig, we're going to have the Police National Night Out, hopefully, uh, Wannaboo again, and Wannafest and Oktoberfest. I would encourage everybody to come out and be friendly. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, everybody, for, for participating again to all the people that are, are joining us tonight. And, um, hopefully, I think I saw Roberta was on the list, that she's going to have a great time reporting this. And, um, I look forward to meeting many of the people that participated tonight. So with that.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Gary Hertzberg.
Second.
Second by Nella Fry. Roll call, actually, I'm going to make a comment before we do the roll call, if that's okay with you. And Adam Kreitzman is on. Adam, can you put yourself, your face on? I just want to say thank you to Adam, um, and your staff for all that you've been doing. I know that this hasn't been an easy time for the police. And, um, I have nothing but the greatest respect for our police staff here in Wanakee. Um, and, um, continue to do the good work that you guys do and, and educating our, our population here on all the good work that our police staff is doing. So, um, I did want to say thank you for coming on tonight and, um, recognize that. Any comments from your side? Not to put you on the.
No, uh, really here, just like all of you just listening and, uh, you know, obviously new to this role and help people reached out already and, and, uh, you know, we're always looking. And, and, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can be better and we'll continue to do that.
Awesome. So thank you, Adam. Okay, so we have a motion by Gary Hertzberg, a second by Nyla Fry. Roll call vote, Caitlin, please.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristin Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Owens.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody, for participating and we will see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.